Ladies and gentlemen, fellow councillors, please stand. Welcome our mayor, councillor Nigel Yates, our deputy mayor, councillor Adrian Lawton, and our chief officer, Mrs Sarah Hayden. Can I ask Reverend Jan Jan Kate to say her prayer to start our meeting, please? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Special to start the meeting by a prayer. Loving and gracious God, we gather here this evening with a shared commitment to serve our beloved town Biddles. For the beauty of this town, the rich heritage and the strength of its people, we give you thanks and praise. For the gifts of friendship, collaboration and shared vision, we offer our deepest thanks. As we begin our meeting tonight, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. Help us to work together in the spirit of unity, always seeking the greater good of all. Grant us open hearts and minds to listen to one another, to value each opinion and to make decisions that will foster grown harmony and prosperity for our town. We are thankful for the trust placed in us by those we serve. We thank you for the dedication and gifting that each of our councillors brings. You grant every one of them a deep sense of peace and joy in serving you and our community. Inspire us to act with compassion, fairness and integrity so that Biddles may continue to thrive as a place of care, connection, beauty and hope. In the name of Jesus, our Lord and Savior, amen.
I have the... If you don't mind. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of Biddles Town Council. Just going through the usual preamble. This meeting has been recorded and will be uploaded to the Biddles Town Council YouTube page. The aim is that decision-making should be transparent and in the public domain, which will involve more of our local community and local democracy. By being in this council chamber, you are consenting to being recorded and for your image to be added to YouTube. The images and sound may be used for training purposes. Any views expressed are the speaker's own and do not necessarily reflect the views of Biddles Town Council. Please view the guidance on recording and public meetings policy if you need more information. Thank you. So yes, welcome to today's meeting. I hope everybody had a good summer break and was able to enjoy at least some seasonal weather. It certainly looks like autumn is upon us this week, but hopefully come Saturday, and we'll come on to that later in the meeting, everything is set fair, so we'll see. So we'll start off. I see we have got some residents who are present here today, sitting at the back. I'd just like to confirm that any attendees who are here will actually be named in the minutes unless you specifically want to be left out of the minutes. So that's something which we'll sort out. I hope that's outside and not in digestion, but we'll see. So moving on, the first item on the agenda, item 23 is public participation. And we have Staffordshire Police and we have got PCSO Josh Hargreaves, who is going to make a short five-minute presentation, and then we'll have a bit of a question and answer session. Okay, Josh, over to you, and thank you very much for coming.
Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry, I'm rushing. Just had to meet. So yeah, it's... I've got no... I've got no press date standing there for someone. So...
Yes, okay, we'll go straight into questions then. Jill, councillor Salt.
As you might appear, it could have been a motorbike outside. It's been absolute chaos up on Church Road and around Biddles. When I was walking back from Sainsbury's last night, there was a guy on a motorbike that didn't have a registration plate with no helmet wearing in front of him, going up and down doing wheelies and stuff out the front seat. What is going on with the motorbikes?
So we are aware of the motorbikes. Sadly, it's kind of like getting lucky with them, dropping onto them where they want. And I know that one was outside. We were aware of that one. We were currently in, I won't say pursuit, but we were actively looking forward. We're having no lights and they're being addressed if they go down the side street. No lights, we can't see them. We are aware of the motorbikes. We are trying to collect all and any of the VRMs that are on them, just so we can make a log, identify the tracks these people on section 59.
Just before bringing councillor Jackson on a related point, I have had reports of quad bikes going around Millais Sports Ground, which is something we obviously don't want because they've been cutting up the surface and obviously it's the beginning of the football season. So again, keep an eye out for that because there is obviously good access. It's hardly restricted access there. That's something we've not particularly had before. Councillor Jackson.
Yeah, it's the same subject, actually. I was just getting ready to come down here tonight and there was a lot of church folks, and there was two flying up and down on the road on the football pitch. I would have run 999, but I was a bit tired at the time. Is that the best way for us, as councillors? Because when you ring 101, you'd run out of petrol before the phone would be answered.
Yeah.
I mean, if the guy's riding now with no helmets, it's potentially life threatening. So that's my excuse for sort of saying it's a 999 call.
Yes, if they're not wearing helmets, if they're all on like, say, playground, if you don't want to go through 101, there is the online form, which still is just as quick as 101. Well, not as quick as 101, sorry. Anyone comes straight to the CSOs once it goes to the control room, as expected. I understand obviously with yourself saying it is a danger, which it is, but yeah, 101, the online form, if they are just on like a playing field.
Information, I did pick up that you've confiscated one bike from Biddles.
Yes, where that was seen.
I thought, well, that's part of the problem sorting, but they say there was two tonight just before it was coming out. And I don't know, but it sounds very similar to that one, just went past now. But I get the feeling that as though they're laughing at the police. No, and I understand it's not easy to pick them up and fly down an alleyway or whatever, but I don't know, just keep a drone up and see where it goes or something. But it is, it's worrying because there are a lot of young people using that playing field in front of where I live. And they fly over the end of it, it's a steep bank, and they've got no idea what's on the other side of that bank until they get there. And they get there at 20 to 40 mile an hour. There's not much they can do. They're going to hit somebody one day sooner or later. And I just hope that we're not here in a few months' time, or some kid's ending in an accident and has got broken arms, broken legs or even worse in hospital. And really, it irritates them and the residents just for the noise that it creates. You know, you're sitting there having your tea and...
Like I say, it's some of these online crosses which we go across the field is, we can't chase them because of obviously that, they'll speed off and they end up causing an emergency. So we have to like say get lucky, kind of drop on them as and when, if they see us, they're just bolted. In bad time, we get to where they've gone, they could be anywhere. It is frustrating for ourselves. I understand where you're coming from, but we are trying to get on top of the situation. Like I say, we're collecting the RVs, we're leaving out descriptions, people who match them, and we are trying to...
Okay, I've got councillor Hart, followed by councillor Jones, followed by councillor Proudlove, and we'll finish with councillor Ward. So councillor Hart.
Thank you. Who's watch commander at Biddles?
I think our sergeant for Biddles is Calvert Donald.
Calvert Donald. Sergeant Calvert Donald. Thank you very much.
Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to expand. I mean, the two lads, if it's the same two lads on the bike with no helmet, I've seen them a few times. In fact, I nearly collided with them. In fact, I've got them on my dash cam, if you want it, which good it'll do you because they've both got balaclava and all the rest of it. But I'm intrigued, I mean, if you're there, if they were wheeling about here now, how are you going to catch them? If you can't chase them and you can't, what can you do? You can't do anything, can you? You can't chase them. You can't knock them off.
Yeah, we have to stop, like, observe, stay around the area and see what trips go down and wait for a stop.
So really, you've got to catch them pulling up at home, have you?
Sort of, yeah. All pulling up there like that.
There's got to be a better way. There's got to be a better way. As councillor Jackson said, there's got to be some way of surveying it and when they're spotted, somebody, someone following, a drone or something following it. There's got to be, we just either will to do it. It's another one of these. I think councillor Jackson's right. I think they are in some respect. They're laughing at you. I mean, anybody who goes on the web, you'll know, you see videos all the time of motorbikes popping wheelies past patrol cars, and they won't chase them because they're scared to knock it, they'll fall off and then they'll get blamed. But I just think society's gone mad, that the police cannot enforce what you're supposed to be enforcing. I'm not blaming you, I'm not having a pop at you.
I understand.
But it is really frustrating.
Thank you, Geoff. Things, because like I say, we have to get lucky. Like, a lot of things have to be in place. We have to have like a PC that can then see the bike, just one unit. It really does fall into numerous sort of things fall into place all at once. And like I say, I understand obviously the dangers, we're fully aware. We are trying our best to pack to these people and, you know, try and find places we can, it's just, I'd say, getting lucky essentially.
Councillor Proudlove.
Thank you, Geoff. Yeah, it relates back to the quad bikes and millais councillor Yates referred to. It's not just the actual quad bikes on the sports field. I've had reports of riders intimidating residents and dog walkers and whatnot, so it's a bit more than just the use of the quad bikes up there. I mean, we've had reports, you know, back to us, it's more difficult to actually relate that because it's actually, you know, capturing that sort of thing while it's happening. And I don't know if it's a case of trying to get some patrol up there at some point to have a look at what's going on.
Speak to my colleagues, make them aware of obviously what's going on, and we can train the different shifts, which I hope to be able to cover it all. It's again, I have not been made aware of this, it's the first time here and I've brought it around my colleagues, but I'll also speak to them, send emails about maybe solid to where, so we know seeking diverse resources, all hopefully try and get across the top of the situation.
Okay, lovely. And councillor Ward, and this concludes this presentation.
Yeah, I mean, in years gone by, and I don't know if it's certain, there used to be a dedicated like a motocross patrol group from the police. And when you talk about, you know, access down the alleyways, and I get that, you know, obviously a car can't chase them down narrow alleys. But certainly I was aware, and I'm talking not in too distant past, there used to be motorbike teams from the police, motocross bikes, if you like, multi-terrain vehicles, and they could go after these people. Now, is that still in situ? Is that still in place? Because just the presence of that in a, you know, in a high street, going up and down on the police motocross bikes or whatever, might have an impact on them. But certainly, you know, and I agree with councillor Jackson and councillor Jones, you know, we can't just stand by tiddling their thumbs and going, well, there's nothing we can really do. We've got, you know, drones, certainly what councillor Jackson's meant, drones up in the sky, looking at where they are, following them, chasing them, so we know exactly what's going on. But just, you know, and it does seem, and I agree with councillor Jones, we're turning a blind eye to what, you know, the antisocial behaviour and we're not coming up with a solution to it, and we shouldn't be doing it really, you know. Let all the, you know, the agencies come together and try to come up with a plan because just stating, well, we can't go after them in case they have an accident, sorry to the public, that's not good enough. So we need to do something a lot more positive than just saying, well, if we catch them when they're parking up outside their house, then we'll do something about it. That to me is, that's reacting, that isn't being proactive, that's reacting to something that may happen in the future.
All right, thank you. To be honest, I think you've got the point.
Yeah.
It's not a good...
It isn't. I mean, it's a very common theme. You haven't been ganged up, we haven't raised, it just shows. And I think you've heard, obviously, the issues which we've got in the town at the moment. It's a handful of people, but it's a handful of people who we really need to get on top of. But thank you for listening. Please take it back. Next month, whoever you send in, hopefully you again, because you've done a fantastic job tonight. Let's have a, let's see if we've got some positive results on it, especially with the darker nights coming, it's even compounding the danger, to be honest. But thank you very much.
Thanks for going, Geoff.
Thank you. Okay, we now have a short presentation from Mr Ben Parry, who represents Residential Energy Services.
Good evening, everybody. It's actually a short presentation from James Wakefield, who is acting as a stand-in this evening, Ben Parry, who I understand is sort of only scheduled to join you this evening. So apologies for not noticing you have that previously. Thank you, everybody, for inviting me to attend your meeting this evening. It's a real privilege for me to be here. I'm a representative of an organisation called Residential Energy Services. Residential Energy Services sometime last year won some funding from the Department of Energy Security and Net Zero, and has been deploying those funds to run energy advice events out in communities across Staffordshire and Shropshire. And indeed, multiple events have been run here in the Biddles area or wider Biddles area extending out to, I'm not exactly up on the job, please so pardon me if I don't get it perfectly, but here in Biddles and then out in Biddles Moor and Nymplesley and other areas, where representatives of Residential Energy Services have attended community events, including those organised by the council here, particularly energy-saving events, and have had some great successes with the project. So that involves qualified advisers coming out to community events and connecting with members of the public to help them understand more about potential ways that they could save energy, but critically for more vulnerable groups, ways that those individuals might be able to find out whether they are entitled to available government funding and offering support to those individuals through that funding journey so they can identify first whether they are qualifying for that funding and subsequently whether they would like to apply. Not everybody would like to apply, by the way, but lots of people do. And through that exercise here in Biddles, but also across Staffordshire and Shropshire, the warmer homes project, as it's called, has had lots of success connecting lots of people to funding that they may not otherwise have known about or may not have otherwise been able to...
Not your fault.
That's...
It's not as subtle as we agreed, George.
It wasn't me.
Much time.
What I brought along with me was a short video that was made. It was about a resident from Biddles Moor who benefited from the service that I've just described and went on to have multiple installations, what are described as retrofit installs, into their home, which has helped them to save money, stay warmer, be healthier and happier in their home. And really, the reason that we selected that video, and that can, I'm sure that can be circulated at a later time or perhaps appended to the, oh, really? Yeah, if it's available now, that would be brilliant.
My name is Dennis Madrid. I'm 78. I come from Biddles Moor in Shropshire. Wind, rain, snow, big air, it's not good. And it's always been about how we're going to keep going. Interesting, trying to check, start a lot of reading. I'm thinking, yeah, cold, rainy, cold, miserable. Start a lot of burning, oh, it's going out. And it took about two hours, and that's before, you know, that's... It made me tired, it made me uncomfortable to charge.
Chris McDeffers asked a energy day at the local town hall, who quickly established that this property is off gas and in need of energy efficiency improvement.
He didn't have any inspiration, so it made him a bit of a... Everything is useless, it's pretty...
At Essosup and Solar, along with Lough Topol, reducing his energy costs and sales volume and...
You can do a job in your way, I go with 2021, 22, just when it's warm. It's only 24 degrees. Right now, that's when the birds run down again, just, oh, it's all gone now, it's all gone. We just get out of bed and we're, that's fucking dangerous. We can have showers in and then we're, maybe it's a warm, and there's plenty of water out there. As I'm getting older, it's like, darling, it's better to die, it's more the couch.
This town was alone when we came out to do any retrofits, that's for sure. I'm so pleased and proud to say that they're now alone, so we have taken their sat in our spot, we've sniffed them this year.
What can we trust these people? But we should quite a lot of money, and it's a statue, like, to see how much we save. Yeah, it's been very good to you, loving people, stay long, you know.
Warmer Homes Project is delivered throughout Staffordshire. We're popping up in all different locations. We're here to give impartial energy advice to people who are hard to reach, hard to treat properties as well. We're super proud to be delivering it on behalf of Biddles Net Zero and the Department for Energy Security and Net Zero.
I think a way to close that off would be just to give a note that the funding means that the project is running until March of next year. So if anybody has any requests or any ideas about where they might like representatives to attend, any community day, like running or other things, we'd be happy to come along. There's also some additional funding that's been provided by the same government department that supports the same type of advice pop-up in a corporate setting. So it could be for NHS staff. Tomorrow, we're going to a local company over in Staffordshire. There's a whole host of things lined up. So if you think of any companies who may benefit from bringing people in to have advice given to their employees, that's an option as well. That's kind of an extension for the project. I think that would conclude it.
Yes, brilliant, George. George, James, 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 I thought yours then. Well, shall we call you Ben? And I've done one straight first.
No, I mean, it's a go for it.
Right, no, okay, that's excellent. And the thing is, very pertinent at this moment in time with obviously the issues we've got on the news. I mean, the way out is to reduce energy usage by having comfortable, well-planned homes. I don't know if you're aware, there's a new energy officer just literally just started at Staffordmore District Council.
I wasn't, but I would be delighted to connect.
If you can pass on your correct details to Sarah here, then we'll liaise and make sure that that's done, that's organised. One of the issues which there is, and I will say this because this is my brief down at Staffordmore, is having trust with outside companies, people that have got the inertia. There's so much information out there and click if you want more information. And the first thing you get is you have to put your contact details down, which is a barrier to an awful lot of people. So having vetted, verified companies and organisations and your company comes into that category, you know, as much as we wouldn't recommend and endorse as such, it does give that level of confidence that these are safe people to talk to, and that is the direction of travel, which I've been pushing, to get a safe list, at least to have a conversation with.
I think that's a really great idea, and we'd be delighted to feed into that conversation. This is one of 30, I think 36 or 35 projects at the same time funded nationally. But one of the drivers for that funding is very much, as you say, to, I guess in some ways, start to build trust in that space. You know, Residential Energy Services, who I'm here representing today, had to go to great lengths to assure their independence and impartiality so that the advice that was being given was exactly that. And so trust, of course, is closely associated, or is, I guess in some ways, one and the same as independence and impartiality, or is aiming to be sought when those conditions affect.
And finally, for me, one of the frustrations is, is that OGG, the Home Upgrade Grant, which is specifically for off gas, the principal postcodes which are excluded is Biddles Moor, which is off gas. So in some respects, I'm surprised you managed to get all that done on Biddles Moor. Must have been under Eco4?
Yeah, under my, I don't know the specifics on that case, but my understanding based on what you've just said, which is stupid, by the way, is that Eco4 would have been the mechanism there.
Yeah. Eco4 is the energy company obligation. You pay a little surcharge on your bill, which creates a fund to actually pay for these things. So it is, there is a funding system which is there. It's a sort of a hidden taxation system. Councillor Jackson and councillor Kosicki, then, are you showing as well councillor Jones and councillor Rogers, and then we'll call this to a halt.
James, thanks for the presentation. It was nice that it was a local person that's benefiting from it. But can I ask you, what's the feeding for your company with the registered social landlords? And also probably more importantly, in the private rented sector, what can you do in those areas?
Thank you.
Especially, I'm thinking, the solar panels there. Solar panels on a registered social house or a private rented house without some negotiation somewhere.
Yeah, thank you very much. So registered social housing exists, in terms of the funding, exists primarily in a different channel through the, what I understand to be called the Social Housing Decarbonisation Fund. So while we might encounter tenants of social housing as part of the community events, most often we would refer to the landlord and perhaps work with the social housing provider to communicate information about a specific need. So that has happened as part of the project. In terms of rented accommodation, my understanding is that where there is a tenant of a landlord, it's possible for the tenant to request that the landlord looks at the funding that is available through such schemes as Social Housing Decarbonisation Fund and so on. And so that's a bit of a joined up effort. But my understanding is maybe there are challenges there, and I can quite easily see where those challenges might come from, but I understand there is a mechanism there. And in terms of the qualifying criteria, those criteria sit with the tenants rather than the landlord. So for example, if you're below the earnings threshold or something like that.
Yeah, obviously, there is a problem there, isn't there? Because, you know, landlords tend not to like tenants who are totally sticking the hornet's nest, as it were. And people have been evicted out of private tenancy for doing things like that. So I can see a problem there for a tenant in the private rented sector actually accessing this and being worried about whether the tenancy that they've got would carry on if he did that. It's a real, that is a real problem, and it's a real problem, and then he'll be buried and... So that's a problem. But it just seems to me that there's like lots of tracks going down different avenues instead of having an overall that catches everything that can, you know, say to private landlords, the private rented sector, that this is available and not go through the tenant, but go through them. So the benefit goes really, all right, the tenant will have the benefit of a warmer house, lower bills. Also, the landlord will have a property that has been improved and it hasn't helped that landlord anything. So you can see, going through that route rather than the tenant, I think would be more advantageous. And then the social sector, I mean, it seems as though there are many tracks going at the same time. You mentioned there was something else in the social sector, that they've got another avenue of funding and...
Very successful funding avenue, I might say, the Social Housing Decarbonisation Fund.
Okay, that's my thing. Thank you, Geoff.
Yeah, I think on that, clearly, housing is multifaceted, you know, some... Yeah, I thi- I think on that, clearly, housing is multifaceted, you know, some people are owners, some people are tenants, some people are. Tenants of um, social housing organizations. And I think each of those arrangements requires um, a difference, a different approach. And I think that's why the tracks that you describe are are existing at the moment. Whether those tracks are are perfect, I don't know, but I I do see all of those tracks having. Some form of success and benefit, as was observed in the video for the for the owner in this space, as I understand.
Councillor Kaseke.
What is the criteria to be eligible for this particular scheme? And is there any cost to any no modus?
Yeah, thank you, there there are multiple, there are. There are multiple criteria associated with um, the different schemes of which there are quite, there are a surprising number, actually. Um, there is an earnings threshold that's quite a common one. And if below that earnings threshold, then that may indicate that the um homeowner or the tenant may qualify for some. Intervention, another um, one of the key criteria for all of the funding mechanisms. By the way, in terms of the advisory, there there are no criteria. So we so we would target events where we can connect with communities and have the most impact. We certainly wouldn't turn somebody away from a a community event. In terms of the funding that might follow, there are multiple criteria. One of which is around um, the Energy Performance Certificate of the. Homing question, whether that's tenanted or whether it's from a private landlord or whether it's owned. And it tends to be the case that um, if that property were um, D or below. Then that would be an indicator that some funding might be available. And then we can add in other factors like um, maybe disability allowances or maybe certain um. Needs that an individual may have, so it's quite a complex picture. But I think that in itself demonstrates, to my mind at least, the need for um, the the kind of. Independent, impartial, hopefully trusted advice that rares and other organizations as part of the same. Um, program of projects are giving up and down the country. No problem.
Councillor James.
Yeah, thank you, Mr, just very quickly, uh, you made it for Mr Mayor, we had some discussions about this a few months back. And I booked our church hall for a presentation day and we've not yet done that. So that might be an opportunity we can coordinate with residential services. And get it done, it's booked and paid for, two, three hours, uh, just a date to be fixed. So putting that out there.
That's exactly the kind of things um, that we've been doing and we'd be delighted to come and service that need, so.
I will actually put a point of clarification on that. At the time, you were reasonably unknown to the wider Staffordmore's organization. And one of the things which we were concerned about was they weren't, they they were just another. One of the companies who's trying to sell their services and the priorities to sell the services. As opposed to what we wanted to ensure is that they were a government vetted organization. Whose prime responsibility was to give advice, which could then potentially carry on to provide service. But it was the impartial advice which was the thing, so it it actually caused quite a discussion at county. And quite a discussion at Staffordmore's History Council. We've now got over those hurdles and I'm quite happy with my other hat on to have them presenting here. So I think moving forward, yes, absolutely. No, 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 but it's it is an important point which you raised.
I got the direct approach from one of your colleagues.
We had those concerns, didn't we, we had those concerns.
Mr Mayor, our mayor here is also the portfolio holder at S M D C. So I chucked it in, I sorted this out, what's held is of the legit blah, blah, blah. In the meantime, I did book the hall and it's still booked, so we can do that.
Can do that, yeah.
Date to be agreed.
Yeah, absolutely.
In terms of that trust piece, there's been a great deal of trust. Established through this project, both from an advisory perspective and also from an installed measures perspective. And I think sometimes when maybe when we talk about trust, maybe it's sometimes about um. A a lack of understanding, a lack of maybe not able, maybe somebody is is um elderly. And vulnerable and perhaps is not able to get a handle on. Um, all of the information that can help them to make informed decisions about what they may or may not want. For their home and we've seen lots of success through the project, as was represented in the video. Of having that um advisory step in there. That's really helped to add a lot of value at the install stage for very credible installers. Who perhaps were having some of their messaging maybe misunderstood in some way.
And finish off with councillor Rogers.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, a question, a comment please, is it means tested, sir?
Um, in terms of funding for, so in terms of the advisory. No, the advisory is available to everybody that attends. Clearly the focus is on more vulnerable, hard to reach groups. But no, my understanding is that nobody would be turned away. In terms of what happens after the advisory to to find out more about whether that individual. May qualify for funding, there are certain criteria that would apply. Um, and means testing is often one of those criteria that comes in for both.
The reason I'm asking, my elderly father was contacted a while ago with some organization similar to yours. And they come along and advised, put things in possessions and then found out he wasn't entitled to it because he felt a bit too much money in the bank. But if you put in, at least what they suggested, you did fine, but couldn't afford to live anymore. So it's a very difficult one, really.
Um, I. I'm not, to be honest, I'm not exactly sure what to say. What I can say is it definitely won't have been residential energy services that came.
No, I'm not saying it says, I'm saying somebody on a similar lines to you.
It it sounds like um. Maybe there's a a space in the system for. Something such as you've described to happen and and maybe that's something that's been addressed. Um, at levels beyond the level that I'm working at, maybe at a council, district, um. County or even government level, I do know that they say um, that lots of people are expecting in the autumn statements. Some um, statement linked to energy and possibly to. Um, things of of this type in terms of the um, the national effort to improve the state of the housing stock. Be that um, social housing, be it private tenanted or. Private landlord tenanted or what be.
Not, I don't want to conclude for conclude for you, but just to say, uh, residential energy services are at our health and wellbeing fair on the eighteenth of October. So if you've got people who you think might be. Uh, good for the talk to, signpost to that event, that's downstairs. So we've got lots of different groups coming to that event, health and wellbeing, eighteenth of October.
Did you say your father anymore?
Father.
Maybe your father could come on to the event.
He's ninety five years old.
I suppose maybe you could come on this.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, we'll we'll conclude it there. Very, very, very important subject because any work which is done now lasts effectively a lifetime. So, you know, it's it's on about, it it helps with the cost of living. Also helps with the carbon footprint, it also helps with comfort and wellbeing, it is multifaceted. And I'm very pleased that you've given a presentation, I'm very pleased that we've allowed a full briefing on it, you've gone. Accessibly over time, but I think it's such an important subject, especially in the current climate, that it's. Councillor Jackson, very, very quickly.
Put that event on the Bill of Works Togethers agenda, the next Wednesday.
Yep, okay, excellent, thank you.
Very, very popular time, I'm going to go to a few questions and hopefully I'll see you at one of the events or something that perhaps we can organize together down the line.
Okay, lovely, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I would like to remind everybody that this is full council, so standing orders do apply. Uh, I know we've had a holiday, but let's get back into the formal way of doing business, thank you very much.
I was under the impression that like the first part with public participation, now into full council. Thank you.
Twenty four.
Yeah, so council, I'm sorry to say. So coming on to section twenty five, apologies, do we have any apologies?
Yeah, councillors Hawley, Garvey and Brady.
Twenty six declarations of interest to declare any disposable union interests and dispensations. And B to declare any other disposable interests, councillor Rogers.
Just on the finances, my travel expenses, thank you.
Thank you.
Which leaves the room, Mr Mayor, just for a few minutes.
Okay, lovely, thank you. So can we look to approve and sign the minutes of the town council meeting, which was held on Tuesday, the ninth of July? Mr Mayor, you just going going forward, looking at it in attendance, public participation. Receive a presentation from Craig Brown, Chief Executive Officer, Assistant Advice. Apologies, declarations of interest, the minutes, Mayor's Communications, standing agenda items. To receive an update on outside bodies attended since June, to approve and principle the need for additional C C T provision. And accounts and finances. So it'd be proposed by councillor Hart, can I have a second please? Councillor Proudlove, can I have a show of hands to accept those minutes please? Councillor, councillor Jackson.
Yeah, get them on minute twenty two. The proposal we wrote to Andrew Stokes, I wonder whether they need him back in relation to C C T V. Could I, Hawley, on our district council, actually follow this one?
Uh, I'm in a position to give an update on that. A paper went to the cabinet member for community. And it has gone forward to the next cabinet meeting for approval. Within there is a statement effectively acknowledging the need for further provision. In conjunction with Biddletown Council, so as a lot of things, the the August. Timing of the of the holidays got it got in the way a little bit, but I I hope to have positive conclusion to that, looking at my fellow cabinet members. So it did go, it did go forward and action has been taken. Okay, so to receive the minutes of the Recreation Immunities Committee, held on Tuesday, the ninth of July. Okay, uh, just go through those minutes, uh, presence, in attendance, apologies, declarations of interest. The minutes. Item requested regarding enhancements to Halls Road Recreation Ground. Receive a verbal update on re- reparations to memorials following following recent testing. To receive a verbal update on feedback with development of a new garden of remembrance. Jobs for the lansman under a number of confidential items. Will be moved by councillor Hart, seconded by councillor Parks. If we've got no comments, can we have a show of hands to accept those please? Lovely, thank you very much.
Just quickly, just going quickly back to the council minutes, I I I didn't attend, but I couldn't believe I hadn't sent my apologies, but it's not noted. But I noticed I did send my apologies for recan, so I'm sure I must have sent them for down, so if they could just be recorded, please, thank you.
Just bear with me while I catch up with my signing. So the next set of the minutes is to receive the minutes of the planning committee, which was held on Tuesday, the sixteenth of July, two thousand and twenty four. Removed by councillor Jones. Uh, present, in attendance, apologies, declarations of interest. Minutes of previous meeting, standing item to consider any proposed sites for local listings. New planning applications received. New decisions and notices received from the district council. And any appeals which there were none, so it's been moved by councillor Jones, can we have a second for that please? Councillor Hopkins, for those present, can we have a show of hands accepting those minutes please? Then that's unanimous. Thank you. Right indeed, to receive the minutes of the town and community committee, held on Tuesday, July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four. Moved by councillor Jackson, just go through, present, in attendance, apologies. Declarations of interest, previous minutes. Consider the celebration of the E Day, two thousand and twenty five. To consider nature in your neighbourhood projects. To receive a verbal update on heritage heritage projects in the town. To receive a verbal update on two thousand and twenty four events. So can I have a second for those minutes please? Councillor Rogers, and for those who are there, can I have a show of hands to accept those minutes? Again, I believe that is unanimous, thank you very much. And finally, through a move and sign, the minutes of the finance strategy meeting, which was held on Tuesday, the twenty third of July, two thousand and twenty four. Moved by councillor Rogers, again, just going through, present, in attendance, apologies, declarations of interest. Minutes, count matters, to receive an update on shared prosperity funding. To confirm arrangements for the re-tenanting of the burial grounds contract. To confirm the providers for interpretation boards within the town. To consider developing a town centre shop business watch project. Mayoral funds, standing agenda items. And there was a number of confidential items, it'd be moved by councillor Rogers, can I have a second on those please? Somebody was there, councillor Jackson, and can I have a show of hands to accept those minutes please? Again, I believe that is unanimous, thank you. Let me sign those and then we'll move on. Okay, moving on to Mayor's Communications. Well, the first thing which I'd like to say, looking backwards, was that I think we had an absolute fantastic July festival. A real spread and a real mixture of events, starting from the uh, launch day, right at the beginning. Finishing off on Church Road and we've got a couple of members, a couple of residents who were heavily involved in that. And what I would like to do is to thank everybody, everybody who was involved, councillors, volunteers, participants. Absolutely stupendous and a and a real showcase for Biddle, so I absolutely applaud everything which is which which was which was done there. We thank you very much for those involved. Uh, moving forward, that one of the most interesting and uh, annual events which is coming up, which is this Saturday. Which is the car show and sandwiched in the middle of the car show at half past one is the opening of the. Community Arts Project, one which quite a few people around this table and a lot of residents have been involved in making the various. Placks and memorials which are actually on that bench, that is, the car show is starting at one o'clock. The memorial bench has been opened at one thirty, so I've got a lot of screwing around, I need to remember my pins for that one. Uh, and what I would like to say is we've had a number of councillors who volunteered their services on the Saturday morning. There was, there was a marshals' meeting at ten thirty here in the council chamber. So for anybody who has volunteered and anybody who wants to turn up to volunteer, the more the merrier. Uh, we'll see you all at at ten thirty on Saturday. I think the weather's set fair at this moment in time, the sun usually does shine on us, even if you're sometimes above the above the clouds. So we're looking forward to a very good, positive day as usual. Uh, and the only other announcement I want want to make is my personal events coming up. We are on the final throes of organizing a folk and jazz weekend, similar to what happens in Leake. So it's going to be a combined Leake folk and jazz organization and Biddle folk and jazz organization to bring. An event together on the first and second of November, on the Friday night and the Saturday night. So there's acts which are na- national acts as well as local acts dispersed and so. na- national acts as well as local acts dispersed, and so tickets will hopefully go on sale within the next fortnight, and we're looking forward to that being a, a successful event as well. Okay, thank you. Is there anything else I need to add? I think that's fine, so good, excellent. So moving on to item number twenty-nine, standing agenda items. Item A, to receive an update on the management of town council assets.
Yeah, just a note to say that we, um, for the holidays, I was chasing leases that we were hoping to get for different projects within the town. So just to remind you that we are still waiting for leases for the visitor centre, the Slater Street project, and the two sets of toilets, the car park ones and the new ones, the new ones, as part of the bus hub. Um, we have received very lovely resignation actually, and, and pinged you a quick note about this for emails, but just to kind of formally say that our lady who lots the toilets for us at the bus hub at the weekend has gone off to university, which is marvelous. We expected her to do that, and, and we're hoping to kind of have a new arrangement in place sooner or later, so that should be covered as well. I have no further updates, so if you could put up the question.
I've got one particular update, and that is on the comments regarding the leases. They are inching forward. I did have, I've had a conversation with Mark Trillo, as well as Matt Rarther. They are, uh, most of the work has been done on them in the, in the legal department, and it's Matt Rarther, the current head of assets and interim head of assets, is leaving in seven and a half weeks. And I think he's made it his mission to make sure that they're over the line, and it's something which we chase as cabinet members every, every meeting. So he's just the, it's just the backlog at, at, at the legal side, there's no real holdup. There is an issue, a longstanding issue to do with the effluent treatment at the visitor centre, which has put a, a, lots of tentries spanning the works, and, and that the Coal Authority insisted on a survey of the ground. They're now insisting that the ground is grouted before they can put the, uh, so obviously there's quite a lot of coal mining going on under there in the very, very distant past. So unfortunately that remedial work needs, needs to take place, and that is obviously an, an extra level of complication, but that is, that is going forward. Note, I'll have some more news on that. Uh, so if there's no further comments, you, councillor Csec, we were talking about Victoria Goldens, if you wanted to make a comment, or?
Yeah, and there's, there's various updates on different projects, but there's nothing in relation to that former part of Craigside. I would have thought it would have been greened by now, and the tarmac moved, because essentially it's a part of the former Craigside play area.
The car park, opposite to Victoria.
Yeah, I know, it's not on the agenda though, is it? I'm happy to provide. There it is, but I do need some notice of items, and then I can give you an update.
So we'll have an update of the next town council meeting, if that's okay?
That, Mr Mayor.
Well, you'd only ask the question again, then we'd only be another month down the line, so I've teased it, you know, teased it out. Uh, item B, sorry about that, to receive an update on the health and safety activities, including risk assessments.
Thank you. Uh, yes, councillor Holthwaite has been to us this afternoon. Um, and as you know, he's the manager of health and safety, he's been coming on a quarterly basis, and today's activity is involved looking at the reports that we've recently had done by David Owen, who's the corporate head of health and safety at Staffordshire District Council, who we pay on a kind of contract basis, and kind of reviewing those recommendations and our responses to that. So that's been a useful process for us to go through.
Okay, thank you. No hand sharing. Uh, and item C, to receive an update on the Biddle Works Together project.
Uh, yeah, just quicker on that. So the next meeting is next Wednesday on the eighteenth. Um, so the agendas will go up for that this week. Um, this is where we bring together the plan for what people want to deliver this winter. Um, so we've already had some conversations with people who want to run different groups at different times of the week, so that's, it should be very positive.
Okay, uh, no hand sharing there. So moving on to item thirty, to receive an update on outside body meetings attended since the July two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Councillor Rogers? Into councillor Harper, sorry, sorry.
I went to Stafford last week with councillor Harper. Um, nothing relative to Biddleton, but one councillor put a request a little while ago that we put a ninety, twenty mile an hour ban all over the country, changing the highway codes, and they changed the mine to thirty mile an hour. SPCA decided it's not up to us to do anything about that, it's local councils that we want to put a twenty mile an hour area or thirty mile an hour speed when it's in your town, not something to take through to government and change the highway code. So that went one a bit long, but this report that we did go. Um, we've both a little while ago, the chief executive has stepped down. A new one has started this week, I haven't met him yet. I'll bring a report back next time we go, try and get on with him. Thank you.
Lovely. Councillor Harper, so you were probably first.
Sure. That's enough. Right, thank you. Following on from Wayne really, um, from the parish councils meeting at Leake, they got together another little committee, a working group, as we prefer to call them these days. Um, and I'll give you the title of this working group that I'm on. Strengthening the relationships for town and parish councils task and finish working group, which I think is a tidy, you know, and I'm sure everybody's really thrilled with that sort of title. What it's, what it's about basically is this, that in Staffordshire Moles, and I didn't know this till, till that day, we had the meeting, in Staffordshire Moles, there's forty-two parish councils, which is a heck of a lot of parish councils. And the, the idea is that we can all start working together. I'm sure this has been muted before, but I think there's more of an impetus on this occasion, um, which is led by Lynne Swindhurst. Um, and whilst we were sort of, it was the first meeting, so everything was bouncing about. Um, and one of the councillors mentioned Biddle in particular, the work that Sarah has done, Sarah and her team, quickly had that one. Um, and everybody, you know, sort of nodding the heads, it's fantastic and all this sort of stuff, putting Biddle on the map. Um, so then when it went quiet, I stood up and I showed them the that one, sixty odd groups, communities, associations that we've got in Biddle as well, and that did shut them up. Um, but we do have another meeting and that's in October, that's the eighteenth. Um, and what I would like, if I can talk directly to Jill, if I'm going to Mr Mayor, is when we do have that meeting, I would like to show them that it's your work, and I think it's only right that I ask you for your consent to show them, because it's, it's, it's another thing for Biddle. We've all, I think, Jill, you give us all a pop here, this. Um, and we all nodded yeah, it was a nice work, piece of work, et cetera. I think we've got to fly the flag for Biddle for every single occasion we can. And I know Andrew has been invited down that day to talk about big parks, so somewhere along the line I will drop that in. If you've got any spare copies, I'd love. Okay, thank you very much.
Certainly can, councillor Holthwaite, yes.
Um, yeah, that'd be great, because I think one of the, well, I know, one of the recommendations within that group is to share that with other councils and things around the country, and I hope that they can replicate it and make and their communities a better place for their residents. So, yeah, and I'm also writing, uh, Sarah and I are writing a book chapter. So we're on the second draft of the current book chapter, so hopefully that'll be published in the new year, that contains a chapter that'll be published in multiple languages around the world, just about Biddle, Biddle Town Council, Biddle's other projects. I'll, if we get a few copies, I'll give you one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just to finish off, Mr Mayor, if I may, so I think this committee, this working group thing, uh, has got some legs. And I think it will improve Staffordshire Moles, um, a bit of the old joined up thinking that we keep talking about. Um, and as I said, I think it's a group of people I can work with, frankly. Um, so, so I'm enjoying myself on that first day. Um, and I hope it's got the legs to run for a long time, quite frankly. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. I think you're enjoying it because I'm not on that committee, so. You're enjoying it probably because I'm not on it.
Your name was?
Uh, councillor Harper.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, yeah, um, Wallers Partnership. Um, last meeting was, was an interesting one, because it was actually a site visit. Uh, and I was very, very impressed with some of the work that they've done. But we, we always emphasise that, that really sort of money should be divvied up round Moles, and it, it's not just for conservation areas in certain towns, things like that. There are, our, our history is very much not in the town centre, but on the, on the peripheries, on the, the outskirts of the town. And we've got to, to try and get our share of projects, which we, over the last few years, we've increased the amount of money that we've got from Wallers Partnership, which has been very, very useful. But sometimes when you've got listed building, which it's hard to still, to take into consideration, it can take an inordinate amount of time. But it's also discouraging people from perhaps thinking that it's a part that they can just dip into in phases to sort out a private organisation's troubles, because they don't want to fork out for, um, repairs on, on, on legacy projects that they've, they've been handed over the years. Uh, and that they can't keep coming back time and time again. Um, just a, an addition to something that they've already applied two and three times for. Uh, it, it can't be fair and equitable for the other, other organisations and towns that are applying funding. It shouldn't be just a, a, shall we say, an opportunity to just get money from the, the public purse to sort their little problems out. Um, and I think that's been made quite clear, uh, well and truly. Um, but Wallers Partnership is a different kettle of fish altogether than what many of us go to, a different mindset. But I really do enjoy going, and I thank you very much for sending me. Uh, because I've gone there in several different guises, under different positions that I've held. Uh, and I was vice chair to Hilda for a, for quite a while, and quite by accident. It's one of these things that just happens at the, the beginning of a meeting that you didn't realise was coming your way. But, um, very pleasurable to actually sit on that committee, and I recommend it to anybody.
Brilliant, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, does that conclude the updates on outside bodies, just looking around? Yeah, okay, excellent. Uh, item thirty-one. Hmm, item requested by councillor Yates, item imposed on councillor Yates, uh, to confirm the town council should pay for footpath, pathway on behalf of Staffordshire Moles District Council to be reimbursed by the UK Shared Prosperity Fund. Um, I suppose there's no easier way of writing the sentence about what happened. The background to this, I was approached by a disabled resident, an elderly resident who uses a motorised scooter within, in, um, long, just off Long Valley Road. And the premise was, is can I come and have a look at some footpaths? So I went down there, county hat on, expecting to have a look at the footpaths on the side of the road. It turns out he, he was having difficulty being able to use his motorised scooter to get effectively from Gilla Heath to Biddletown Centre. There was effectively three obstacles in, in the, in the route. One was if he tried to use the train lines, the access from Long Valley Road onto the train lines, which is halfway along Long Valley Road, which, which was sorted out, not quite sure who sorted it out, but sorted out a couple of years ago, and it's, it's a roided way since he can get his scooter down, but he couldn't get his scooter back. So we thought, right, okay, we've got to find out who owns these footpaths. It's always a very difficult thing to ascertain, nobody wants to own a footpath. The second one was going, Long Valley Road goes into Hive House Road. And there's a footpath there which comes out on Mau Lane. Right on the end on Mau Lane, there's a massive plump of unkempt uh, grassland in a mound. Again, it was an obstacle course. And to manoeuvre past it threw him into the road a little bit, and he considered that dangerous, I have to agree with him, so I made a mental note of that. And then we went across and the exit going into Sandown Road on the tin bridge from Washington Close, there's quite a step down now. We don't know why it's happened, it's not, it's not, not been there in the past. So he could actually step down with his motorised scooter to get the Biddle, but he turned his scooter around and it was jammed, it was stuck, so he couldn't get through. So I spoke to Gareth Knapp to see if Staffordshire Moles District Council owned any of those footpaths. He said, well, there's no problem, we, we don't necessarily, but I understand what you're saying. I sent him some photographs, I understand what you're saying. He says, we have got some money in UK Shared Prosperity Fund, it certainly fits the bill, the, the relatively small jobs. Um, is there any chance of getting Biddle Town Council's leantsmen to do it, because it could save an awful lot of hassle and aggravation, so being me, apologise. Yeah, no problem, I'll get Rob to have a look at it, I'll have a look at it. Give me a quotation, sent the quotation into Gareth, said, absolutely fine, no problems at all. But could you do it through Biddle Town Council, which, no, I really, I have to say, yeah, I'm sure that's okay, he's all, all that's been, says we'll pay hundred percent, there's no but it'll be a case of you sorting out because you've got the relationship with him, we haven't got the relationship with him. There'd be an awful lot of tender documents and this, that and the other which are already approved. So me thinking it was straightforward, obviously it isn't quite as straightforward, because it's got to be an approved payment from here, but it's a hundred percent reimbursement to repair these footpaths. But the one thing which I will say, because I do know there's been a gill exercise done through the Little Heath and Community Zone, not quite sure where that is, but I, I do believe it's in the process. I think if there are issues and things like this, then I think we should be a little bit more forceful about getting those through. So as much as this is very much a Gilla Heath centric project affecting, affecting the boundary between Biddle North and Biddle West. And it is, to me, very necessary, because this guy actually demonstrated the issues. I personally think we should go forward and, and, and do this. Relatively thing straightforward for us to instruct the leantsmen and we will get the money back, but uh, well, that's, that's it really, that's, that's the background in the story. Slightly hands up about being slightly off procedural, I just wanted to get the job done. There's a lot of hands which depresses me, to be perfectly honest. Councillor Law, and you've been very quiet, so you can go first if you want.
No, I'm not, we've, I'm taking that there are five of us.
Right, okay, hit me with the five.
The gentleman over here, the gentleman over there.
Councillor Harper.
Ah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, thank you for the efforts that you've done. I think you've done the leg of work. Um, and quite frankly, I think we should go ahead with it. Um, if you don't mind, I would like to propose that we do exactly that.
Thank you very much. Councillor Jones.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, my first reaction when I read this was that it should go to finance, somebody should debate it at finance, so we can debate it properly. Uh, I'm a bit reluctant to, uh, support, I don't even know how much it is. I mean, how much are we talking about? We're talking about a few hundred pounds or a few thousand pounds? Because I'm all for smoothing out wrinkles like you are, Mr Mayor. But I think it'd be a remiss of us to commit a big chunk of council money without proper debate at finance. If it is only a few hundred pounds, then I'll fully support going ahead with it, Mr Mayor.
Just point of clarification, it's going to be a hundred percent grant given back to us, and to be honest.
That's by the by, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, so it's not Biddle Town Council's money as such, it's the Westminster's money. Uh, I think from members, two thousand six hundred and seventy.
Two thousand nine hundred and.
Two thousand nine hundred and thirty.
In that case, I think we should debate it properly at finance and, and come to a decision. And I saw it as saying we're going to get it back. Have we got that in writing somewhere from anybody?
Frat he wanted to send me last week and I said you can't. Who was next? Councillor Jackson.
Yeah, I think you've, you've mined out virtually all of, all of the issues. Um, the money is going to be coming back to us, you know, it's, it's a verbal contract that somebody wants to not with a paper, it's written on. Uh, and if there's any way of smoothing things out and making things easier and getting something done without having to jump through a whole lot of hoops, I'm usually all in favour of, and I'm in favour of it. Uh, the money's coming back, it's really a paper exercise. I think we can make that decision tonight, I don't think it has to go to finance, because technically we're not spending anything, it's coming straight back. Uh, in fact, if it's been offered before, we're going to get it before we've spent it, so I don't think it's a big issue, I think we, I think we can sort this out tonight and, and get it done. Um, and there's an agenda item further on in, in the next committee meeting about alleyways, which perhaps we need a bit, bit more thought for that. Uh, so I, I, I would move that we go forward with the proposal that town council pays the leantsmen and it's reimbursed by Staffordshire Moles District Council out of shared prosperity fund. It's just amazing, isn't it? Shared prosperity fund, I'd said a long time ago, as this programme runs towards an end, it'll be money looking for projects rather than projects looking for money, and that's exactly how it's happening now. it'll be money looking for projects rather than projects looking for money. And that's exactly how it's happening now.
Councillor Proudlove.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, just picking up on your comments about various footpath related issues all over Biddle rather than just, just that. Um, something I picked up at a meeting, uh, with your housing, uh, at SMDC last week. Um, we seem to have a lot of these footpath type issues cropping up where we don't know who controls what and who owns what. Um, so I raised this with, with your housing and in response to an issue that's arisen on Craig's side, they are doing a mapping exercise at the moment to determine. Have, obviously they'll have that information for Biddle area, other areas as well. Um, maybe at some point we need to, it's probably not here, one of the committees to try and, um, see if we can piece various bits of information together from, from all other bodies. SMDC being one of them, um, to, to get a handle on, on what we have locally and who who owns, who controls, who manages, who maintains.
Councillor Harp.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, a number of the footpaths, particularly Biddle North area, used to have, uh, clappatch gates, you know, the, the swinging, the swinging gate, which had been fallen down over the years and were made by Heath Ironworks. And you see examples of them. I've got one in my garden that's, that come from elsewhere. And they, they rot very quickly if they're not attended to. Um, but the thing is that, uh, a lot of styles have been put up over the years by farmers, which is very difficult for a mobility scooter to actually uh, advertise traverse style. Uh, so it might be worth using if we want access, accessibility of disabled people or older people with mobility scooters. And perhaps some of the styles need replacing with clappatch gates.
Yeah, good point, good point. Um, right, so we had a proposal to accept this by councillor Harper. It was seconded by councillor Jackson. Um, we also had a proposal from councillor Jones to take this to finance. Oh, councillor Rogers would like to say something before we.
Yeah, just maybe, I think we just need something in writing that they will page, not, oh, we're throwing it around it. I think, yeah, something in writing.
I, I, I acknowledge that and I'll make, I'm pretty sure I've got an email to be honest. I will, I will ensure that there's something in writing and hopefully it's a check. Where he goes ahead. So on that, on that caveat to finance.
In, in, in that case, Mr Mayor, if that, if that assurance, uh, is, is part of the proposal to go ahead and spend the money, that we don't do it till we've got that, we'll withdraw my.
Okay, okay. So we've had a proposal, we've had a second, that's the only one on the taste, councillor Smith, finally.
Um, could I just second, um, Councillor Proudlove's proposal to do a bit of a mapping inventory exercise?
As a separate entity.
As a separate.
We'll, we'll take the vote on this first and then I'll just, uh, speak to the chief officer about that proposal because that might maybe something to go forward to another committee.
Or we've got alleyways and things like that.
Coming up on the recreation amenities. Yeah, that's right, that's what, that's what I was referring to. So I've had a proposal, I've seconded to, to accept this, uh, reimbursement and for town council to instruct our leantsmen. Can we have a show of hands to accept that? And any, any against? And any abstentions? One abstention, councillor Howellsworth. Okay, so that's carried, thank you very much. So every day's a school day. Um, item thirty-two, following the summer break, all councillors received a verbal update in relationship to progress with regards to the town hall frontage, the Benched Station Road, the lamps on St John's Road, the Overton Trough and the local transport plan. Any comments regarding that? I've got councillors.
Going to give the update.
Are you going to give the updates? This is all councillors' Tuesday. Oh, I thought you hadn't seen. Right, okay, so we'll have the update first verbally from the chief officer. And then councillor Salt is the first one with a comment.
Thank you. So, um, obviously quite a lot has happened over the summer and I've tried to keep you updated with bits and bobs of emails. But I wanted to, to bring some of those updates. So every, I know that everybody's up to date with where we've been. I've kind of done a bit of a brain dump as, as regards some of the, um, things I'm going to say, just in case you wanted to, to have that for your records uh, before the minutes come out. But, um, as regards the town hall frontage, I had a meeting with the architects and the quantity survey yesterday in Leake. Um, they would like us to consider using full bricks for the mining, uh, names for those. Uh, we were going to use brick slips, but they have quite a number of concerns about brick slips and actually how long they last. They say that even with a really good adhesive, if water gets behind a slip, it, it could potentially crack and uh, and not last as long as we want it to. So they'd like us to use full bricks. Uh, we can still have red bricks with black writing on. That's the sort of thing that people would expect. Um, and to date, we have sold two hundred and forty-eight uh, bricks with four still in query. Um, and for now, I propose that we stop the sales of those till we can work out how that all fits together. And we've got a plan for that in the front. Um, on the original plans that had gone to the planning department at Staffordmore, the creamy coloured walls that were on this side were also to have red brick slips on top of them to cover the creamy coloured walls. Um, by the time we have, um, done the restoration work on the railings and had a look at the coping stones, actually the architects think it would be better if we, uh, rebuilt those walls rather than sticking, um, slips on top of the existing walls. Think it would be better if we rebuilt those, uh, as red walls. Um, less maintenance going forward and then we know that the walls are in good, strong condition. Um, we were aware that there were going to be some additional costs, part of the build process. Um, and that's something we've talked about, uh, in various different arenas before. We need a structural engineer as part of the process, that's nine hundred and thirty pounds. Um, the building regulations process to, uh, would be for the eight hundred. And they are still waiting for further quotation for the management, um, that's needed within the construction design and management regulations requirements. Um, and they're going to have to request a full services report for the front as well. Tender will go out to anyone who's interested in completing the work for us at the end of September uh, for four weeks. And then construction at the frontage is due to start end of October, November time. Um, and we've talked extensively about how people will get into their building during that time and where, kind of where the site will be and the rest of it. So the plan is at the moment that the frontage as it is will have a ramp that will take to the pavement so that anybody can access the town hall. And some spaces on the car park at the back will have to be, um, removed for the kind of, uh, storage of items involved with the build. So that's kind of where we are with that.
Councillor Salt and then councillor Proudlove and then councillor Jones.
My major concern about this is the Christmas light switcher.
Yeah.
And the impact that it's going to have on that. Um, so obviously that's not this meeting, but if that can go on to an agenda in the town and community service, that length, and maybe bring the architects in on that. Um, so they can talk us through the actual space will be available and whether we might need to rethink that. In light of what could be going on outside the front of the town.
Councillor Proudlove.
Chair, just a couple of things. Um, obviously the change from uh, brick slips to actual bricks, uh, is a cost implication to that, I assume there is. Um, and would that be covered within the overall budget for the, for the project? Um, the other point relating to, to, to that is the specification of the brick. Does that be important? Because obviously bricks can, can spoil as well as the, you know, brick slips can be damaged too. So it's a couple of points of clarity there. Obviously a question for the architect, I mean.
Absolutely, and for me, Chair, and the quantity survey as well. So we have, we already had that discussion yesterday and um, I'd sort of said, okay, well, if that's your recommendation, we will be experts on that, but we do need to understand the cost differences there. So that's something that we can look for us now.
Councillor Jones.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I've commented on, on the splits as well. Councillor Proudlove's picked up one of the things I was going to say, have we charged enough? For each brick, if we've got to have bricks now, roads and slums, it's scary. But I'm sure we'll have to, it's too late to put the price up, I suppose. Um, but, but, what occurred to me was that, I'm, I'm pleased actually with the oven bricks, I think they will be more durable. Um, but it's occurred to me that once it's done, it's done, isn't it then? With the slips, you could, you could knock the, knock the slips off, the blank ones and maybe put an add on later. That was my understanding, that could be done. They were like tiles and you could sort of add another section in. It seems to me if it's going to be bricks, then once it's done, it's done. And maybe we should reinforce that to people. If they want one, you'd better say now because it's no good coming after Christmas because you won't be able to add. You know, they're going to add one in later. Uh, and just as a, a sales expert, make sure we've got everybody that wants one, has got one.
Yeah. And I, I've, I've asked them that question, whether there's an, essentially a different wall that, you know, maybe in a year's time, perhaps if we've missed anyone, or whenever that time scale would be, whether we can do something retrospectively then.
Add another wall.
Well, or add to a different wall within the area. So I've, I've asked them to look at that just in, if you can imagine that as soon as we say they're not available anymore, they will get ten more people who say they didn't know about it and it's. So I, I have asked them to look at that, just we've got a future proofing.
Councillor Salt, very brief interjection.
Just permission to come back just as a point of information, um, from, for what you've just said on the, um, application form. I know you talked about when a damage and it can't be replaced again. But we did make very clear on the application form that there would be replacements if it became damaged. Biddletown Council wouldn't be liable. So just to let you know that people shouldn't be shouting that as if the brick gets damaged and the name falls off. Because we said on the application form quite clearly, it's tough. We're not liable.
May I, Mr Mayor? It wasn't, that, that wasn't the point I was making, Julie. It, I understood there's no sections could be, you know, if somebody, if half a dozen people later on wanted to add their names off, we've got an area that got no names on. Blank slips could be knocked off and, and name slips could be put on. That, that won't be able to be done if it's all bricks. So just, you know, if you want one, get, get your name on it now, sort of them.
Okay, moving on, the bench on Station Road.
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, you've spoken about this already. Uh, so the, uh, we're going to officially open it, um, on uh, fourteenth of September. The deputy lieutenant will be in attendance, um, alongside, I think, most of those people who'd made tiles. Um, I've sent information to the Chronicle and to, uh, social media. Um, we've had the final bill for that from Philip. Now putting the claim to UK Shared Prosperity Fund. Um, as we talked about, still no CCTV on site and we still need to do an interpretation board. Um, I've spoken to the electrician about repairing the little lights that are in circle two, so he's on the case with that. Uh, and now that the bench has been constructed, I'll add that to our insurance pots.
Thank you. Councillor Rogers.
Just very brief on that one. I've been asked today when the official opening is, because we hadn't heard, but it's going to miss which Chronicle is it?
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Have we contacted the schools? Because we contacted them in the first place to make the slates, haven't we? Haven't contacted the store to tell when that official opening is?
Yeah.
Right, because lady who's asked me today says, I've heard nothing through the school. That's the Ask Philip R day the other day when he was working down there, when it is. Just trying to make sure that people are aware when it is, that's all. Because I've been asked the question today, that's all. Thanks.
If you can just make a, a comment there. Is it, is it possible, it's only Tuesday and it's still a few days, is it possible to rustle up a quick meme? So we can put it out on social media, the same as we're in sharing the, uh, the car show thing.
It's on the website.
For, for opening of the.
Yeah.
I haven't seen it, so it must be easy to see.
Must be easy to find, okay. We'll find that, we'll find that in copy because I must admit, we, we have done some copying of the car show one. It's got really good traction, hasn't it, this, this last day or so? So we'll make sure that happens, yeah.
Well, the car show has been boosted in the past couple of days. For that.
Yeah, yes, I know as well. I can all do that in a strange way. Uh.
Councillor. If, if I could first declare the interest, as a committee member of the Little History Society, can I assure people that I ensured that is a piece, uh, the heading of Little History Society's website advertising the opening of the so-called opening of the bench, unveiling of the bench and also inviting those who still hadn't heard of the, uh, fact that they could buy a brick. So both things for that little group of people. Many other groups exist in the town, of course. But that has got most prominent promotion.
Okay, moving on, lamps at St, uh, St John's Road.
Uh, yeah, so I'm pleased to tell you that the bases for the three miners lamps have been installed today. Um, all the parts have been returned to the fabrication company, um, having been galvanised or powder coated, depending which bit they are. Um, and they are in the process of being assembled. Um, the anticipated costs are there. Um, and the installation will take place, hopefully week commencing sixteenth of September. Um, there's some discussion there as to whether or not the, is that the right word? High up handler. Does everyone know what I mean there?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm glad you know what that is. Come up, put them down, yeah. Um, whether they feel they can do it without blocking the road and whether there's a need for some sort of traffic order there. So they're having, they've had that discussion, having been on site today. If we have to put some sort of traffic management in place, then there's another couple of weeks where we have to do the paperwork for the, for the highways authority there. Um, we, um, have been down today just to see what the situation is for the shrubs and the planting in that area. So we'll, uh, ensure that has a bit of tidy up in advance of them going in. And then again, they'll be added to the town council insurance policy.
Councillor Smith.
Um, yeah, just about the, uh, road closure. Are we able to anticipate that it possibly will need a road closure, that being a single track roundabout, just in case it's going to delay the project anymore?
Maybe. He thinks he can, he might be able to, depending on the weight, that's what they're going to look at, actually go on to the roundabout. Because we're certainly one of the areas where the lantin will need to go. They can't get close enough just to drop it from the road. So it, it might be that he they're just going to think about the logistics. And I, I can't make any comment because I don't, don't know how that works.
Councillor Jones.
Just very quickly, I just wanted to say for the benefit of the people that might be watching really. Um, if, if anybody's sceptical about these lamps, I haven't seen any images in the public domain yet. Jackson showed me a photograph of an unpainted one the other day and they're fantastic. Don't, don't judge or expect what we had before. What's going in is ten times better. They really do look nice.
Don't spoil the surprise.
Saying it's going to be nice.
A little bit like the, uh, mural at the Biddle Heath and Community Zone. Keep it the best kept secret until the actual day because, yes, right.
Mr Mayor, just can I go back slightly on, on, on the bench? Now we've all had an email, so just make sure everybody's picked some, a reading session tomorrow at ten o'clock. If anybody hasn't seen that email, you've got a few minutes spare tomorrow. We're going to hear that area out, ready for the unveiling of the bench at ten AM tomorrow, if you're available. Thank you.
So moving on swiftly, Overton Road Trough.
Uh, yeah, this is the longest running Moles' Partnership Board project in the, the Moles' Partnership Board projects. Um. Yeah, the length of the project is installing the concrete base within the next couple of weeks. But it's estimated that the, uh, trough will be installed with the replacement finials. Hopefully week commencing thirtieth of September, um, with a traffic management in place. We believe that we've now discharged the different planning conditions that were imposed on that with the exception of providing a mortar sample. Um, but we can put the stones in place. I know who that is. We can put the stones in place and then add the mortar on afterwards. So we're really hopeful that we're almost there after two planning applications and all sorts of other stuff.
Uh, may I ask a brief question? Don't we need a rail closure for the concrete plant on or is the leantsmen fleet afoot?
Uh, no, he is, can manage that, he thinks, um, him and his team.
Good. And finally, local transport plan. Now, this could be, now is meeting in its own right, to be perfectly honest. So very brief update on the local transport plan.
Yeah, so just to let you know that I have been invited to attend a parish council engagement session at Stafford, so I'm going to go to that. Um, as regards, um, a couple of other projects that are linked to that. Destrionisation project that we'd, um, been working on for a little while in the southern end of the high street. That, I've been assured has been added to the long list within the local transport plan, um, for capital projects. It's on the long list because Within the local transport plan, um, for capital projects. It's on the long list because we haven't. Worked it up to it being completely deliverable yet, but that's good news that it's, it's on the radar there. Um, so if you have any kind of priorities in terms of local transport that you haven't fed into that process yet. I'm happy to take those with me to Stafford. I'm just interested to see what the process is. Um, I did wonder whether it might be worth revisiting, we, we talked before about a kind of cycle route that went down the eastern side of the town. Maybe that's something to get on a list somewhere, but by all means. Um, if you have any particular ward based issues that you want me to feed into that, I'll happily take those with me to Stafford.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, moving on, Jill, councillor Salt.
Does this include buses? Are we talking about buses or not? I think so.
Yes.
Please can we mention the lack of bus services to our colleges and our students and to like. It's a real, real challenge and every single morning, especially at the start turn. Um, we've got buses driving past students and students haven't got options in Biddles. They've got, uh, the sixth form, which is academic sixth form. That doesn't do many vocational qualifications. If students want to do engineering or arts, electronics or plumbing. You've got to go to college out, college out of the academy. And the bus services to our students, bottom of the front row, it needs raising at the highest level. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Proudlove.
Thank you, Chair. Um, last Wednesday evening, the meeting of the Growth and Economy, uh, Committee at Stafford Smallings. Um, the committee had a presentation by two transport planners from the county about both transport plan. Those issues were raised, not, not just in respect to Biddleford Cross, the, the district as a whole. So. Um, the county planners are aware of those issues, um, obviously. Um, following through on, through on them is a different, um, question.
Thank you. Uh, moving on then, finally, item thirty three accounts and finance. Uh, section eight to approve the accounts to be paid in August, September, two thousand and twenty four. Uh, I trust everybody has a chance to look at these details and these figures. If you can take them by exception, is there anything which wants raising on the expenditure over five hundred pounds? And on the expenditure of less than five hundred pounds? Do we need a vote to consent this? Okay, and on the, an ultimate page is credit card expenditure. Is there any comments to be raised on that? And then finally, item B to approve supplementary accounts, which have been tabled and, and where they're to be elected. Oh, we have expenditure over five hundred pounds on the supplementaries.
Absolutely.
Most, right, okay. Expenditure less than five hundred pounds on the credit card. We've had a proposal to accept those, as, as read by councillor Harper. Can I have a second please? Seconded by councillor Hart. Can I have a show of hands to accept those please? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And that concludes the meeting of the town council. And that's.
Seventeen thirty three.
Nineteen thirty, nineteen thirty three.